Twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, as constitution.
Thank you so much. See you in Vickiware. From the history of that city.
Okay, up next, we have a second reading of an ordinance amending section twenty-three dash thirty-nine point one sewer service and changes of the code of ordinances in the city of Warrensburg.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this is the ordinance that we brought forward last council meeting addressing the customers that are outside of city limits. This ordinance will put into effect that these customers will need to come to see how with their bill and let us know what their usage is in order for them to have a correct bill sent to them, otherwise they will be calculated on the average that we said four hundred eight hundred cubic feet.
This is for adoption or rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
All right, we have a first and second reading of an ordinance amending Article Six of Chapter Twenty-three concerning parades, processions, and festivals of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Warrensburg.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, last month, August twentieth, we talked to you about requiring liability insurance for special events, street closures, parades, those kinds of things. We are now bringing forward the ordinance to require that. We're asking in the ordinance to have groups have a million dollars liability insurance that would name the city as additional insured. We also cleaned up some levels of the ordinance. We had parade permits that required a different timeframe to be submitted, but we didn't have any timeframe in the ordinance for street closures to be submitted, but we had thirty days on the form. So, all that's been cleaned up, it's all the ordinance now, and we are recommending approval. Happy answering questions.
Were any of the organizations able to get a quote on liability insurance for some of the events?
We didn't ask anybody to do that.
No, I talked to Suzanne. I think, were you going to look at the, out of the cost to add that additional insurance?
We already have the insurance covered in our general liability, so there isn't an additional cost to our organization.
Would you like to read my title?
All right, so, so the first reading, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Article Six of Chapter Twenty-three concerning parades, processions, and festivals of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have a suspension, excuse me, an ordinance suspending the provisions of Section Three dash fourteen for certain special events, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, pursuant to Section Three dash one-four B of the Code of Ordinances.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a suspension of the open container ordinance for Bird Fest. The event will be the same location as it was last year, same format, and we are requesting or recommending approval.
Would you pass that ordinance to second reading by title?
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
An ordinance suspending the provisions of Sections Three dash one-four for certain special events, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, pursuant to Section Three dash one-four B of the Code of Ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance amending ordinance five-three-six-five concerning the adopted fiscal year eighteen annual budget for the general fund.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, in this year's budget, we did not allocate any funding for police cars. We believed at the time that the condition of our fleet would allow us to delay that purchase. However, during this fiscal year, we've had two of our vehicles that have become maintenance nightmares. We spent several thousand dollars on both of them getting them fixed, and they're both vehicles, two thousand fourteen police Ford Explorers, have more than a hundred and ten thousand, while at one hundred miles, they're very demanding miles. We had one in for motor work, and the mechanic showed us one of the motor parts that was just covered in sludge, and these are vehicles who get the oil changed every five thousand miles with synthetic oil. What we, what we realized is that idling with the hard driving of the city is much more demanding on the motor. These motors are not. The police package motors are just a regular V-six. And so, when we were in for the motor work, we were told that both vehicles are probably going to be transmissions, about four thousand dollars apiece. So, we're at a point where we're dumping money into them, chasing money to try and keep them going. We were able to contact the Missouri Highway Patrol. They have a program where they sell their used vehicles that are still trading them out every fifty thousand miles. We can get two, two-year-old chargers, twenty-sixteen Dodge Chargers with police package, bucket seats, power windows, locks, all this stuff, basically the same car that we bought two years ago for sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, about a ten thousand dollar savings over buying them new. These vehicles, most of that mileage is highway mileage, so they're in pretty good shape. We checked maintenance records on two of them that we were interested in, and they're both vehicles that haven't had a lot of maintenance, or outside of normal wear and tear maintenance necessary. We believe that these two vehicles can be sold at auction and yield probably around twenty-five hundred dollars, I would also have to purchase somewhat. There's a pretty good market out there for these used vehicles. We just had one stripped down and cleaned up, and it actually looks really nice, you just don't know what's underneath, so. We, so we'll save some money there, we'll also save eight thousand dollars by not having to replace the transmissions. So, we're already, by doing this, ahead quite a bit. The two vehicles we're replacing are both Ford Explorers. We have two unmarked Ford Explorers in our fleet that were admin vehicles, so we're going to take both of those and mark them up as patrol vehicles, and then the two chargers we get will be admin vehicles, so that they'll not have the wear and tear that a normal police service vehicle would have. So, we think in the long run, this will help us with not, not needing to purchase vehicles for another year. Be happy to answer any questions, Jaal.
Well, kind of a replacement schedule is, is our recall for our vehicle fleet?
Not for the police vehicles. Last year and this year, we didn't allocate any funding for them. One of the things that I looked at with our fleet is the condition of the fleet. We didn't have any vehicles that were late, that were still, all in really good shape. We've taken pretty good care of them, and so, I didn't feel like it was important to replace vehicles just because we were at a certain mileage point. We don't get a lot for them on the other end, so if we've got a vehicle that's running well and we want to keep it, we're going to try and keep it as long as we can.
Is this one off as far as the high patrol vehicles, or can we expect that to happen?
Well, they have a hundred and fifteen Dodge Chargers in there right now, and so, one of the things that I want to look at in the future is, we have good luck with these, maybe looking at other vehicles that we can, like SRO vehicles, school resource officers, supervisor vehicles, vehicles that maybe aren't driven as hard, maybe looking at that for future purchase as well.
Would you pass that ordinance to second reading by title?
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance five-three-six-five concerning the adopted FY-eighteen annual budget for the general fund. This is for adoption or rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance approving and accepting the Broadview Edition replat of lots eleven and twelve, block ten, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at four oh nine and four eleven South Eighth Street.
This is a replat between two lots at four oh nine and four eleven Eighth Street, and what it does is move the lot line between the two lines a little bit to the south from where the original side lot line was. It's, it's location in the front is very similar, same proportion as where it is now, and then at that front setback line, it starts to shift south, so that by the time you get to the east end of the property, it's moved about ten feet to the south. Both structures that are currently on the lot will be the step back, side setback requirements after the plat is approved and recorded. Currently, the one on the north does not, it is on the step back of the, where the original lot line is. Staff has worked with the, the two owners and their representatives to have corrections made, the staff needed made, in order to meet our subdivision requirements, and at this point, we would recommend approval of the ordinance as submitted. Planning and zoning commission considered it last week at their meeting, and recommended approval as submitted also.
You've said you'll give that second reading by title?
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
An ordinance approving and accepting the Broadview Edition replat of lots eleven and twelve, block ten, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at four oh nine and four eleven South Eighth Street. This is for adoption or rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Cahill, lots one fifty-eight through one eighty-seven, tract O, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located in the north side of Veterans Road.
This is the fourth phase of the Cahill subdivision. This area is on the north side of Veterans Road towards the west end of the project. And the copy of the, I have extra copies of the plat for large size if you need those for the discussion this evening, we can pass those out. It does include thirty single-family lots and one tract, and that is tract O, which is located on the north side of the project in the northwest, kind of the northwest, north central area. That area is a mitigation area, and would be maintained, the entire, entirety of it is also designated as a storm drainage and utility easement. This is the first plat that you have of this project of Cahill that departs from the preliminary plat that was previously approved by City Council in two thousand and six, and so, that isn't a huge deal, the ordinance does allow for that, your codes allow for that, but I do want to let you know that it is a little different, and that there's a copy of the preliminary in your packet, but primarily, once this is approved in the way it's been submitted, there would not be, Hillman Lane would not cross that drainage area and the lake on the west end of the lake. It would not cross over to the north side of the lake and exit out on the Larson Avenue. So, instead, with this, that's what is shown in the preliminary plat, it's a little hard to see, but there is a copy in your packet of that, where it shows it as a through street. This changes it to a cul-de-sac street. It does change the other street layout so that there is two ways out of this phase, so there's a connection from, I think it ended up being, from Rich Boulevard over to Hillman, and that wasn't there previously, so they have increased connectivity in some other areas to accommodate that. Because it does depart from the preliminary plat, staff has notified the developer that all future phases of the plat, which, it triggers that the, all of those meet all the code requirements of that type. So, whenever those other phases come in, things such as number of units on a dead-end street, number of ways in and out of a phase, if any of those requirements are triggered by code review, then there would be subject to those, because they have departed from the preliminary plat status. I think the only issue that we've had come up since your packet went out, and since planning and zoning commission saw it, staff was contacted by the homeowners association on Friday morning, and they stated that they objected to the comment, general note number four on the plat, that says that tract O will be dedicated to the homeowners association, that as a homeowners association, they were not willing to take ownership of that tract. And so, someone's talked with the developers, and Darren is here this evening to represent them. They called me this morning, my courage called us, said that they've met with them, and at least for now, the developer, Bulbridge, will continue to own that tract O. The city, it's not an option to give it to the city, so either developer or the homeowners association or someone other than the city has to own that. And so, with that, unless there's different comment from Darren, staff would offer an amendment to the ordinance that you have in your packet, and that would be to amend the ordinance to add a number seven, which would read, to change the general note number four, to read tract O shall be dedicated to the developer, Bulbridge LLC, who will obtain ownership, ownership of said tract O.
And that would require a vote by the council's management group.
Would you give me this, this is a paper with that language on it, if you want to read it, make that motion? Would, would you amend the bill, asking?
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Now, you'd be in a position to go through your normal motions when asked to second reading.
An ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Cahill, lots one fifty-eight through one eighty-seven, and tract O, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the north side of Veterans Road. This is for adoption or rejection?
This is, no, they just voted on the amendment. This is the vote to pass it to second reading, and then you would have the vote for adoption or rejection.
So, I moved, said, don't pass it second reading by title.
So, just, hold on, hold on, hold on, first vote. We need to ordinance and, hold on a second.
Okay, so this is not for adoption or rejection?
No.
Okay. Okay, so Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Now, ready to begin, okay. An ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Cahill, lots one fifty-eight through one eighty-seven, and tract O, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the north side of Veterans Road. This is for adoption or rejection? Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have an ordinance amending Section twenty-four dash forty-one sewer charges, commercial usage of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Warrensburg.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this ordinance will work as the residential ordinance did in past year, that you all passed earlier tonight, only for the commercial users. As with the residential users, commercial users will need to provide the sewer collection department with a water bill, showing usage to have a correct reading for the sewer usage. So, this, this is basically the same thing, only for commercial users. Are there any questions?
You've said, I'll be passed second reading by title?
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section twenty-four dash four-one sewer charges, commercial usage of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moving on to other business, we have a discussion of trap neuter and release proposal.
I'm just going to have a short presentation of the slideshow addressing some of the issues and concerns of the council head of our last meeting. Thank you so much. And I do have some handouts for you all, if I can approve. Thank you so much. And those we'll get to later in the slideshow, but, oh, here's one more. So, I just want to start off by saying thank you again to the council for continuing important discussion, and for our community members who are here tonight helping me voice this desperate need for change for our animals. We can no longer continue to see them suffer, and we'll do everything in our power to create positive change. Now, I formulated this presentation with help, advice, and testimonies from several of my fellow community members who feel as strongly as I do about this topic. As we all know, our town is centered around the story of Old Drum from eighteen sixty-nine. It is a story we continue and remember to talk about today. You can find his name everywhere around town, between the dog park, the animal shelter, and local businesses. His memorial resides in front of our courthouse and remains a symbol for all the dogs this town's residents have loved and lost. The story of Old Drum is one that speaks loud and clear, the defense and protection of our animals. With our town being centered around the story of Old Drum and uses his name to promote the city, shouldn't our community hold animal welfare to the utmost importance? Our community can and should come together to provide a better environment for our animals because they live here too. For those who work in rescue, work bombarded by calls, messages, emails about kittens they have found somewhere, we get people who reach out to us with a kitten who had been tossed out of a moving vehicle, hit by cars, abandoned, hurt by people, shot at, poisoned, and the list continues to go on and on. The cruelty is all too real in our area. It seems like everywhere, everywhere we look, we see suffering every single day. Personally, I have a difficult time driving through town, afraid I'm going to see yet another cat hit and killed. Many people just drive by not batting an eye. I think I can speak for many people in this room, that it has a major effect on us. We do everything in our power to save their lives, and it never seems like it's enough because of the calls, messages, emails, and photos keep coming. I'm not trying to make you feel uncomfortable by telling you this, I just want those who aren't involved in rescue to know the real difficult truth, and to paint a picture of what rescue volunteers and shelter workers deal with every day. Many of us here tonight are animal lovers, rescue volunteers, shelter workers, nonprofit leaders, and foster families. Many of us become overwhelmed and exhaust our resources, funds, and support to take care of them on our own while we wait to find our rescue backing for them. But we continue to try because they need us, and we can't turn them away in their most desperate hour. Instead of punishing those who work hard to protect the cats, our community needs to capitalize on the compassion and energy of the people who are part of the solution. Now, TNR is happening all around in Missouri. More awareness is being raised, sparking more people into action. With this change of ordinance, our town can become rescue friendly, which will allow us to create even more positive change. And now, our first slide, and it will basically be the discussion we've had in our previous meetings. We discussed trap neuter return and its benefits. The benefits will bring many changes to our community and people alike, to our community cats and people alike, I'm sorry. We talked about how TNR is the only humane option to prevent population growth and reduce shelter intake. Going back to the point that TNR isn't always simply trap neuter return, but it's so much more. It helps us find lost cats through microchip scanning, it helps us identify friendly cats who may have been cruelly abandoned, so they can be adopted into the loving home they deserved in the first place. It helps us catch an injured sit cat so we can treat them and get them healthy. TNR cats live happier, healthier lives after being returned. They pose no threats to the public, and they become better neighbors. We see the elimination of hormone-driven behaviors, no more fighting, yowling, spraying, or roaming. We discuss that the return of TNR is important. The return means the prevention of the vacuum effect. When cats are returned, no new ones move in and continue to reproduce. This is why trap and kill is not the answer. Not only is it inhumane, it's not effective. And relocation should only be used as a last resort. Of course, we do not want to see the cats outside at risk to elements, disease, cruelty, or other, other dangers, but for feral cats, it is their home, where they were born, where they thrive, and that's what's best for them. We want them to be safe, happy, and loved, and TNR will get us there, and focusing on long-term is important. Our current process right now for cats, nothing is currently being done to help the cats in town unless a nuisance call comes from a resident about the cat. Only then does animal control pick them up. There is no further action being taken to help them at this point. And for our last meeting, I know liability was an issue that came up, and we were discussing that. I learned that in Warrensburg, residents who let their cat outside voluntarily to roam off their property, unattended, violate current ordinances of Section Five dash seventy-three, and are at risk of encampment through Section Five dash eighty-one. Escape artist cats, more so than not, end up becoming lost cats. These cats are at risk outside, and us finding them through TNR will only benefit them. Without it, we are only reliant on Good Americans posting on social media groups, and it's just not always effective or quick enough. If residents learned just how many potential health and safety risks they subject their cat to in putting them outside, I hope it would change their minds. Ultimately, the city would not be liable if an owned cat is trapped off an owner's property during TNR efforts. This is outlined in the ordinance as I provided you tonight. And furthermore, I just want to reiterate the fact that TNR isn't just going in and taking cats and, and, you know, that we make an effort to connect to community members, connect to residents, connect to potential owners who might know the history of the cat that we're working to trap and, you know, say, and neuter. So, that's, that's an important part of it as well. The handouts that you have in front of you are examples from other city ordinances. The ordinances included are from cities that Alley Cat Allies legal team had a direct hand in drafting. Also included are towns larger and smaller than Warrensburg who have TNR ordinances. The majority of ordinances simply exempt feral cats from at-large abandonment and leash, leash law provisions. I also wanted to include Washington DC's process. It's not in your handout, but they actually had a different approach initially. The Department of Health in Washington DC, which oversees the city, the city's animal control, approved a proposal to conduct a TNR pilot program. Calls about community cats were then referred to Alley Cat Allies, which worked with residents to conduct TNR. Within eighteen months, more than one thousand six hundred cats were neutered and vaccinated. As a result of the pilot program's success, Washington Humane Society, which runs the city's animal control, officially embraced TNR in two thousand and six. In two thousand and eight, DC passed a law requiring animal control to promote TNR for community cats. The pilot program, it started with a small number of cats, sparked real social, social change and moved way of community, the community values cat's lives. So, it's not simply as straightforward as going ahead and jumping in and creating ordinance. There are other options to move forward with this, and if, if a pilot program is a possibility for Warrensburg, then I wanted to make sure that option was clear also. And now, I did include some grants that shelters, nonprofit rescues are eligible to apply for in towns who have approved a TNR ordinance. Missouri also currently has a stay-neuter grant program for nonprofits, animal shelters, or other government agencies. Also, at the last meeting, I know it came up to which local rescues had received a grant. The ones that I was able to get in touch with, Stover Animal Rescue received a TNR specific grant from another rescue in Colorado. Sedalia, after their approval in March, they had a very short window to apply. They applied for, I'm not sure how many, but they were, ended up not awarding, awarded the grant, but they continued to apply, you know, when applications opened. Okay. And that, the slideshow there also talks about Sedalia. Sedalia, I didn't get a confirmation, as far as I know, and someone can correct me on this too. I don't believe that they're accepting feral cats into the shelter anymore since they enacted TNR. It, it's a little bit too early to see a change in their numbers because it was fairly recently, and kitten season was already full swing in March, so. Their numbers, they will be able to get a good grasp of within the year. They actually have multiple TNR days throughout the city, where they actively have trapping, you know, set trapping where they actively have a trapping, you know, set trapping day where they will, you know, tell, make sure they get the word out to city residents, "Hey, you know, we're gonna do this this week, you know, be aware and let us know, you know, keep open communication. Let us know if you have an issue in your area." So the open dialogue is important. They actually fundraise on their own. Animal Fair is a local rescue in Sedalia, and they have a subgroup of TNR volunteers that do their own fundraising and, you know, accumulate resources that way. TNR and Sedalia is not actually affiliated or the responsibility of the shelter. It's totally separate. And also, I listed some TNR success stories from different areas around the country. That ranges from college campuses, Atlantic City Boardwalk. Each is a reduction of the population. Each saw a reduction within the population in the first year. No new litters are born, kittens were taken in, socialized, and adopted, which is another important part of TNR as well. And palliative caretakers for each location where TNR has been activated continue to manage and protect them. Another example is Texas A&amp;M. In the first year, numbers decreased by half the second year through the adoption of kittens and no further reproduction. I know it's an issue on Warrensburg's campus as well, where people, whether they're abandoning their cats or they're not having them stay and neuter, but then letting them go, and it's just a vicious cycle that continues to happen year after year. That is actually it for my presentation. Any further questions or concerns, I'd be happy to address those and continue dialogue if you have any other.
One line to staff, I think, with the ordinance, with the leash law, except for cats also, or just the dogs?
It is, well, for cats, let me pull it up here. For cats, Warrensburg, actually. They don't, it doesn't technically outline a leash law. What they do, what is outlined is any cat that is off the owner's property is considered at-large a nuisance. So any, any cat who is in violation of that is subject to being encountered. So many of the ordinance that you'll find in the package all have specifically written exemptions for feral cats and community cats from all those provisions.
Curious about the grants. How, how do you, how would those be administered, I guess?
Okay, more so than, or more so than not, you'll find grants are going to be given to communities that have TNR ordinances. A lot of them have specific windows where you can apply. I believe the Missouri Stay and New York Fund has a window from January to February every year. I know Sedalia, when they were working on it, their window was closing at the end of March. They have application windows where you can apply for those. I'm kind of learning as I go on that. I know a lot of them are different and they have different requirements, but that's as much information as I've gotten so far on those.
Okay, so as far as the grant administration, that end of it, I don't know yet, however, municipalities are handling that?
I mean, Sedalia is actively seeking grants. They do it throughout the year, as many as they can, you know, apply for and, and, you know, write applications for.
City is doing that?
Sedalia, yes.
Because it's an expensive expense to get a grant, and it's not free. I mean, it's not something I can do is write a grant.
Yeah, it's, it's-
Does professional personnel know that the city of Sedalia is hired to pay, to write a grant?
No, not necessarily. There's individuals within the rescue that can write grants, those who have maybe prior experience or, you know, the knowledge of how to do it. The volunteer in Sedalia, she actively fundraises on her own. They're still trying to get their, you know, group together and build their team of volunteers. But that's, as far as I know, that's the way that they do it. The city of Sedalia doesn't have anyone that sets aside someone that writes grants or anything. It's totally separate from the city.
Grants are kind of, I mean, depending on the level of the grant you're applying for, some of them, yes, you need somebody professional to write it, and then some of the smaller ones, you know, it's a pretty simple form to fill out. You just apply.
And I wonder if you can do online, do you, you have to apply online and that sort of thing?
So what would be the plan if a grant was not awarded?
Um, the plan is, my ultimate goal is to go the nonprofit route and, you know, set up fundraisers, you know, have community events where we can promote, you know, education on a topic and, and fundraise that way too, kind of like on-the-ground fundraising.
No, I don't. I spoke to Bella, I think she did say, she's out of Sedalia, right?
Yeah, she does, yeah.
And when I spoke to her, she said that you could, you can apply for certain windows and give the, the hospital from Columbia, and they'll bring them, they'll bring up, I'll call it a bus, let's not put a bus, and they'll do, for a hundred and fifty dollars, they'll do twenty cats. So, I mean, that's-
Their best students?
Right, their best students, and that's part of their training, is to do that, and you can, you can apply and get that bus to come down. So if they trap twenty cats, you know, before they trap the twenty cats, obviously, they apply, and then the bus will come down.
And then they'll go back that day to where they stayed?
They, yeah, the volunteers will take them back overnight, let them recover from anesthesia and surgery, and then once they feel it's safe enough for them to be, you know, returned, they'll be returned to their original trapping location. And also about the mobile clinics that they do in Sedalia, they're totally self-sufficient. They're, I believe they use the Sedalia Shelter Parking Lot, but they don't use any of the electricity or anything. It's totally self-powered. Their little RV or, you know, bus that they bring down, so that's pretty neat how they have it set up.
So ideally, you would not see any financial impact on the city?
I don't see any on the city. Plus, a lot of us who are experienced with TNR, we do it individually. There's been a lot of cases outside of city, I'm at Spur, I've had people contact me, and a lot of the time, the caretaker will also pay, you know, pay for their surgeries and that sort of thing, so. Whether it's, you know, personal funds or caretaker willing to cover those fees, that helps as well.
I mean, you could see a positive impact too, because if you reduce the shelter demand by half, you know, over the next couple of years, that's, what are we paying to get a cat fixed right now?
Twenty-five.
Okay, so twenty-five bucks a shot, if you, you know, if you drop that by a hundred, but if you're able to get a hundred cash reduced, you know, that's twenty-five hundred dollars right there to a plus.
I think that, how many people are here more than that you? Everybody but Darren. Yeah, that's a good question, or is, is there, I could put you on the spot here, is there anybody who is here in opposition? Steven Karp.
Could I speak for just a minute?
Sure.
I moved here five years ago, and I lived in two different places. And so far, my family has adopted three stray cats that have just shown up at our door. I currently, right now, feed eleven feral cats in my backyard. They blessed me with seven new kittens this year, and I'm not gonna let these animals starve to death. Now, as a community, it's our responsibility. We're the reason they're here, whether somebody dumped them, whether somebody moved away, threw them out the car, or whatever. But they didn't just get here on their own. It's our responsibility as a community to see that this is taken care of, and if it means that we trap and stay and neuter, I'm willing to take these cats back. I spend three hundred dollars a month on cat food for these cats, out of my own pocket because I care. But somebody else has to care enough not to look the other way.
And I know we do have a couple other people on the agenda signed up on the list, so, okay. Any other questions specifically before we get to that? Do you need me to go in order or should we, if everyone is signed up for TNR?
Well, I would, I would check, because those who might have signed up for TNR, I think they've signed up before.
Okay, so I'll go through. If you're not here for TNR, wouldn't mind waiting until the next portion of it, but if you are, this would probably be a good time. Michelle Amos?
Hi, do I need to go?
You can, it'll help.
This is nerve-wracking. I'm Michelle Amos. I live on South Warren Street, literally like two blocks that way, so I think some of my community cats are your community cats here too. I'm one of those caretaker people who is a road trapper, and so far, I've taken four cats up to Stay and Neuter KC, which is on TruSt, and then I've, well, I've taken two there, and then two to the Humane Society of Greater Kansas City, which is on Kansas City, Kansas. So I don't mind paying the thirty-five dollars to get them fixed. It's less convenient to drive them fifty miles each way, especially with the weather. And it's really inconvenient to take a full day off if I'm going to the Humane Society or to have two mornings in a row that I'm able to take a cat in and pick it back up. And beyond that, it's really hard to convince the cats that they need to get trapped the day before I have a day off. Last night, I decided I was gonna take a cat in and I caught a possum. So today, I went to release a possum. They don't want it to get out of cages. It's, it's a good thing to be able to do for these cats, and I feel better when I look out in my backyard where they happen to hang out and I see the little beer chips, so I know I don't have to worry about them bringing kittens that I would love to adopt, but I'm not allowed to. So for me, it's something that really gets rid of that temptation of really becoming a cat lady. It also means that if my two cats, my indoor cats, who are very poorly suited to live outdoors, happen to get out, I don't have to worry about them getting rabies or other diseases from these cats or having the cats with those intact male urges to take them down. So having a local solution would be an amazing alternative so that citizens who do want to help with this are better able to.
Thank you. Janice Russell?
Hi. I actually have lived in towns where this worked really well. I moved here from Florida, southwest Florida, on the beaches, where the beaches are at, and it's a huge problem there. And so I have seen beaches cleaned up where there might be fifty cats at this restaurant living there, a whole family, and there might be fifty cats at another restaurant. And through this program, I saw that cleaned up in just a year. I'm also here because I want to make it clear that Shelley and I were not asked to come here. She's got a base of people without even asking for us. She's got volunteers already. And because I'm a former librarian, I do have some grant writing experience, and that's why, that's why I'm here. I want you to see that she's got the people already. They're gonna just be coming out. I think as soon as this is passed, I think that you will be surprised at how many volunteers she gets. Thanks.
Sarah Bailey?
Could've talked loud enough in the back, but that's okay. I am from town. I live on two nine Broad Street, right by the university. I, we were talking feral cats. My momma's cat took me two years to catch her, but she finally, because she was feral, but she came in the house, got in the house, and had kittens in the house. So those are adopted, but I all expense myself, and so all the cats that I have, I won't mention how many, they're all been neutered, stayed, but now I have three adult male tomcats that somebody who works at the university said they fell in the one hundred block of Broad Street for a neutered males were just left. So I, I know I'm feeding three of them. I haven't seen the four. And for me, it's, I don't want to touch, you know, I can barely touch them. I didn't really get them up and have a program that would trap these cats and take care of them. I don't mind feeding them, but it is a problem, and I used to have, so you know me, a very big, large white dog that I did keep on a leash, or I did keep chained up, but he killed, I don't know how many kittens because the momma cats would have them, they would leave them, they would come up to my house because there was food available, or they would just, one time it was just the university and a poor little kitten, and, you know, my dog, it was gone. And another person who works at the university said, probably last day or two with all the rain, would have been nice to have gone over to Nickerson, over in that area, because in the sewers besides your opossums and your other critters, he said, there's probably eighty to ninety cats that have been, and they're just, the cats that came to my house, they're not totally wild. They've just been left. And they, and then also, the sad thing is, a couple of them, I think they've been hit by cars or something, tried to get better on their own and limp and everything, so I think this program is very good. I just saw it on Facebook, decided I'd come tonight, and like the other lady, I have written grants and required legal help that I think the problem is, we probably do need the ordinance that makes it that much, it makes the applications look so much better, so, thank you.
Jay, I'm so sorry about this, from Vile.
Yes.
Did I say everybody?
Yes, I am here for a different purpose.
Okay.
Okay, am I out of order, or I can wait?
Yeah, if you can wait until just a minute, I'll call you back up in this minute. Okay, so we can move on?
I think we can discuss this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I think that, I think staff or somebody needs some kind of direction if we're, we're thinking about this and how it ought to be written.
I got, I got a lot of phone calls from people, and their biggest thing was that, right now, I mean, you just met two people who can, who have the ability and skill set to write grants, but they can't write the grants because none of, because the grants are not approved for any place that has the ordinance that has, I mean, basically, our ordinance for cats is written, you know, it's, they go to the shelter and five days later, they're eligible for adoption, and then, you know, they're even nice. I mean, fortunately enough, that's not what's happening in our shelter, unfortunately. But at the same time, the way our ordinance is written, that's, you know, we're, we have to, maybe to change our ordinance and give these people a chance to even follow that grant and the TNR program is, is probably one of the better programs. I, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm in Atlantic City. I've been to Atlantic City, you've seen all the cats running around Atlantic City. And I haven't been back there since then because, you know, there are a lot of other problems with Atlantic City's cat cats.
They would do two things. So we would make, it would be legalizing the trapping of cats, which already happens. So that would then be legal, you know, and then as well as, you know, the benefit is to allow them to apply for grants. The question is, how do you write, draft that ordinance? Is it just apply to cats? You know, how do we, how do we roll this out? Is it at-large? Is it just given to not-for-profits? You know, how do you go about doing this? I've seen in lots of research that I've done, other cities are even putting clauses, you know, the goal is to lower the population. The population will take care of itself, but the trap, neuter return is put in back and it keeps other feral cats coming in. However, that area will not overpopulate if they are not fed. However, if they're fed, there will be a lot more cats that will show up, and so, and some of them have put into their ordinance that it is illegal to feed at-large, trying to keep the populations down. And so what, what do we need drafted into the ordinance like this to solve this problem? So the goal is to not have cats everywhere, and so some people are gonna say, if you're gonna trap it and bring it back, I didn't like the cats everywhere on my property because the neighbors may have fed them. Statistics say that, yes, they are better citizens when they come back, you know, because they're not, you know, spraying and fighting. But is there anything in protection for those other citizens? And should that be addressed in this, or should we just take it one step at a time?
I, I've heard from the, several people have proposed and, and con to the TNR program. Any ordinance that would be exacted would have to address the concerns that, that citizens that are not represented here tonight, and that is, you know, the feral cat population. And if, if you return them, is that any guarantee that the, a more dominant feral cat won't move in? And I assume the trapping program is intended to take care of that. But I don't have any information from other jurisdictions that, that that works.
So in the meeting that I had done, when you, if you just remove them from, you can either take them to a barn somewhere out in Houghton County, other cats are gonna come in, almost a certainty. Whenever you trap, neuter and return, studies say that that actually, not a hundred percent, but it hurs other cats from coming in. So that's, you'd rather have a neutered cat hanging out than a whole bunch of ferals.
An ordinance that was, was drafted would appear before council for approval. I suppose when we decide to, I mean, take it.
I think we just need to give council direction as far as what are the key points to put in there? What are our concerns are? And then, you know, we can hire someone to research and draft and put that together. But I mean, taking the feedback, we need to figure out which way to go and then.
Didn't you use this young lady as your consulting and researcher? Since she's kind of always done it. And is there a timeline? What's gonna happen? I'm kinda confused.
Well, that's what, so that's what we're actually talking about right now. If the council is in a position where they would like, where we would like to draft an ordinance at this time.
And there is no timeline. We just would like to get it if we do write an ordinance for the TNR to get it right. So that it may not be obviously this meeting or the next or the next, but we just wanna research too, so.
Yes, and I did wanna add real quick, the ordinances that I provided you all, according, well, according to Alcat Allies, they're the ones that had it handed right in each of those. Simplicity is key on those. I believe in Sedalia's that I included on there too. They list who, what community members aren't going to be doing the trap, trapping or return. I think they list residents, I don't know if they, they list like rescue members, but they kind of find out pretty well to how they want it, to how they want it to go.
Did somebody have your permit to be able to, be able to do it? Or was it only those associated with the organization? How did they handle that?
They worded it, if I have a copy, I know it should be in your package under the first page of the Sedalia ordinance. They just list out residents, you know, local members, colony caretakers, anyone who sees it as a problem and wants to act on it. It just allows them, you know, baseline to do it.
And I'll come back to you in just one second here. I just wanna ask a question based on that. Doug, is there a, is it a negative thing that was supposed in here to be specific on who can do it, such as certain organizations? To give like an exclusivity like that? I've never seen an ordinance that had an exclusivity necessarily.
Well, if you listed a specific organization and ordinance certain, if that organization were now in existence for any reason, then you'd be having to come back. I think you would be better served if you decided to move in that direction by identifying the process or qualifying or identifying organizations rather than creating a monopoly.
Well, and I don't want my neighbors to have the okay to do it. I'd rather, you know, even though my cat might be a nuisance to it, you don't have a right to trap this thing and take it.
Been, been around rescues for many years. I would do all the best, majority of this group is, is, so either, is either running an organization right now or affiliated with an organization right now. Animal Fair was mentioned. I used to be, I used to be really involved in Animal Fair. We did, we did a bunch of other dogs. I actually, you know, was able to, I got, I, you know, Missouri realtor gave us twelve hundred dollars for a donation for it. And they got out of the dog business. I'm more of a dog person, so.
So you need to mention some of us today, you give the cats to the shelter?
Or? I believe, I didn't get a confirmation, but I was talking to Mel and she was telling me she believes that feral cats aren't even taken into the shelter anymore because they're directed to TNR. They're directed to that, that group.
How do they get them? So, you know, somebody's gonna call the city to complain, you know? And then how is that transferred and events? If it's not an organization, do they just have a list of, you know, the best volunteers?
Yeah.
For this or the network or a community group? Or how do you get that word out?
Right, it's mostly word of mouth, social media. And they're working on that outreach to community members. They're really working on educating the public and making sure that, that resource is available to them. So it's something that they're trying to continue to build on. I believe they, maybe the shelter picks a call about, you know, someone needing help with cats. I believe that they redirect them to, you know, the rescue and the TNR efforts.
Who does the holding? I understand that there's a medically equipped van that shows up from Columbia, U.N.
Right.
That school, I guess. But who does the holding once you've trapped? If they don't go to the animal shelter?
It's basically the volunteers who are actively doing the trapping. They, they will take them back to their house, let them recover. They stay in the live traps. It's safer for them, it's safer for the people. They let them recover overnight.
No, I mean, the holding while you're accumulating enough to call for the van.
Okay, but.
You schedule it.
Mass trapping.
Yeah, you schedule it out.
Yeah. They, they have an event where they dedicate, you know, one day trapping as many as they can and they'll, we'll schedule it that way. Because it's not always, you know, as we were saying before, it's not always easy to catch them. So you never know what number you're gonna have.
Right.
Sorry, I just thought I would stretch my arm. Anyway, a lot of those individuals in here, we're big animal advocates. We love animals. I mean, this town built on animals, basically. Like having a private group, like a rescue group running TNR is great, but they don't always have the energy to do so. Because they're, you know, they run shelters, they have foster programs, stuff like that. Whereas a private individual who is aware and has ordinances that they can follow, then it's a lot easier to have that individual go out to trap versus trying to get like massive groups like Animal Fair, Possibilities Are Endless, Boone County Animal Care. You know, they just, they don't have the time to sit down and be like, alright. Because they're getting calls every day. Every single day, they're getting like forty, fifty calls, like, hey, this cat had like sixteen kittens on my front porch, I don't want them. Like, what do I do? And they're just not suited to do that. But if a private individual can go through, know the laws, know every, you know, liability, everything like that, then they're able to go out and trap. Now, I know a lot of people are worried about liability reasons for trapping someone's pet. Well, as trappers, we normally go out and we make the area aware that we are gonna trap like maybe the week before, be like, hey, we're trapping on this day. We normally go with buddies, you know, we make sure everything is safe and secure. So there shouldn't really be much to, as far as trapping someone's pet because you're letting them know that, hey, I'm gonna be here, I'm trapping. I mean, maybe someone's gonna be like, hey, my cat's not thick, maybe push it outside and let it get fixed and breed. Like, it won't cost the city anything, you know, as far as financial reasons. The holding period is, that's volunteer based. You're not having to worry about your shelter trying to keep up with all these angry feral cats or spraying cages, you know? That will be our bathtubs getting sprayed. As far as the feeding thing, I noticed you had some concerns about that. Those cats are there anyway. Whether, you know, they're always there. It's like opossums, raccoons, you know, birds. I get upset when I see birds above my car, but I can't chase, you know, the birds off. If I could chase the birds off, maybe I would, but you know, they're there, this is their home, you know? They're not in your house, they're not personally destroying anything. Like, just outlawing feeding isn't gonna stop them, like, no, sorry. More dominant cats, if you have a leader of your colony, cats are very social, like, they don't wanna be near people. And if they're in a colony, I guarantee that they do not want any new insider coming in. And if a new insider is introduced, they will attack it and chase it off. So if you have a TNR colony, you're not gonna have to be worrying about, you know, is there gonna be a more dominant cat moving inside? Or, you know, if I'm feeding them, will more move in? No, if they're fixed and they're vaccinated, there's not gonna be any new ones moving in. So I thought I would just mention that because I've been trapping for a while, you know? Not as much as most people in this room, because still, you know, learning, getting my feet wet. But, you know, cats out of the bag, TNR is gonna be a great thing for this city.
And in other cities, does anybody know if they require any type of permit? Where you have to go to the city and?
No.
You know, get, get a sheet that says, this is what you can and can't do? Kind of an educational process as well?
Not really. Most of us trappers have already been down that road, you know? When I, I had to trap a cat up in Warrensburg at a trailer park. I had to get permission from the property manager. I had to get, I had to let everyone in that trailer park know. This poor cat had a broken leg and he had a broken leg for eight months and no one could go out and help him. They tried calling, you know, no, and rescue wanted to work with him because he was feral. No, you know, the shelter is always full because there's so many feral kittens going in. So they had to call in and I worked with Possibilities Are Endless and we managed to go out, trap that cat. I kept that cat in my garage for the duration of his healing period and then socialized him since he was gonna be a three-legged cat. You know, that would be an awkward sight to see. So he ended up getting adopted to a very loving home. And if you entrust the individuals and the people who truly care about these animals, then Warrensburg's gonna be a better place for everyone.
Just have one thing to say, we have a history on cats and ordinance. And Mrs. Allen, you were talking about your cats going to your neighbors. This ordinance has the right, the animal shelter has the right to trap your cat. And you have like five days, you know, you're on vacation, we know. And this ordinance is a trapping kill. So I think the animal shelter should still be involved in a TNR program because they will be getting calls. Any cat that they trap, they could turn over to the TNR program as a private program. Because we already have this ordinance, that's why there's so many cats at the animal shelter.
Well, I think one of the things I asked last time is that they would, you would scan for microchip or check a collar.
Right. As volunteers and people who are experienced with TNR, they come to learn and identify pretty quickly which one is a feral cat, which one's a socialized friendly stray. And yeah, that is part of the process too, is scanning for microchips. And hopefully they have one so they can be reunited. Another huge thing is that TNR is trap, neuter, return. They're, we're not gonna be moving them out because there's really nowhere to put them. They have their homes, they're set in stone. They're not gonna go anywhere, so.
You just got your cat fixed, right?
Yeah. And the ultimate goal is long-term. It's important to remember the long-term aspect of it. Yes, we're gonna be returning to cats, but long-term, you're not gonna have as many there. And that's heater number two. Kittens are cute, but there's forty of them sitting on your porch.
Yep.
And I think it's easy to, everybody could agree that trap, neuter, return is, is a good thing. And nobody's gonna dispute that. How do we go about it from the city perspective to set a policy that is all encompassing of the entire city, that is able to be managed, that doesn't encourage bad behavior where somebody's releasing their cat when they hear that, you know, they're gonna be trapped so that they can get their cat neutered for free? And so, you know, we're kinda playing devil's advocate, trying to figure out all these things to see what's best for the community. I don't think anybody's objecting that it's a good thing. We're worried about how to facilitate it, how to fund it, and how to keep it from being taken advantage of. So that's the verbiage, they are what we're concerned about, you know, from a city council perspective.
I do wanna ask Sarah, can I put you on the spot? Yeah, just a second. Do you foresee any additional work? Because you're already undermanned right now. Do you see any additional work on where the other?
TNR would not, if the TNR cats were not coming to the shelter, it's not gonna create any additional work. Over the long haul, as these cats are not reproducing, that's less animals coming into the shelter. So that's less responsibility that we have to take. That's less animals that we're already paying to take care of at the shelter. So over the long haul, this is a benefit and a budget issue for the shelter that it's going to decrease the number coming in.
And would you have to be the one to micro, scan like microchips on every cat? Or is there a, I don't know, is that like a public thing you can buy an animal?
That's public, you can buy those yourself.
Okay.
Well, and that's thirteen minutes. We'll do that.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
I actually ended up having to trap a bunch of strays that were outside my house. And one of them ended up being someone's cat who'd gotten out two years ago. He had gone back to going feral and acting wild because he'd been away from his owner for so long. So TNR not only helps save our feral population, but it also saves people's pets.
Okay, we'll do a little.
Council brought up a question about where do you start? Why not start with the communities that already have TNR programs and get copies of their, you know, their ordinance? Sit down, let's say you get five or six of them. Look at them and take the good stuff and leave the bad stuff or the things that we wanna leave out. But at least we give you a starting point.
That's a good, good point. We got this about three minutes ago. So give us a good opportunity to read that. Any other comments over here, council? Okay, thank you. Good discussion. Appreciate your attendance.
I don't want to discuss it now. Do you have staff directions or?
Yeah. I personally would like to look over a few of them. I saw a few things in here that I really don't wanna pinpoint for myself on the spot. There was like three or four of them and I just kinda scanned them. I would rather not make a decision tonight. If we could maybe take a look to the next meeting and then tell staff how to do it. But that's just me. I don't know how to, what to put in it. It could be.
We can talk about general principles. We like it, we don't like it, we're concerned about this, we're concerned about that. And then, you know, it's gonna come back and it can be amended and those kinda things. Just general consensus.
Kind of shortcut a little bit, that's fine, why?
Are we interested in moving forward with ordinance? I think is, is that essentially what you're asking?
Yeah, I think that's what we need to figure out now, yes.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I just didn't know what we wanted to put in and out. And I thought maybe instead of thinking that is, let's look at the ordinance and maybe talk about some things and maybe put in there another, I don't know.
Okay, what kinda direction do you need to start drafting?
I mean, basically, you've got to identify whether or not this is a free to any loan process, whether this is something that would have to be identified and licensed in some way through the city. You'd have to consider who would be in charge of that process and what resources would be delivered to that internally with the city from an administration standpoint. You would have to consider whether or not there would be regulatory standards applied to the process. You've talked about what some of these people have discussed as best practices. Are you going to legislate those practices? Or are you going to let that be a hands-off process? So there are, once you make the decision that you wanna go down this path and you have to determine how rigorously you want to regulate that path and whether or not there are any standards on the backside for identification of caretakers, licensure of these caretakers. There are those types of issues that have to be considered once the city is ready to move in that direction.
So could we start with this model ordinance? And then you can take it and tell us what we need to make a decision on based on this?
I have not been provided that, so I don't, I can't answer any questions about that because I've never seen it. But there will be a variety of policy considerations. Want to continue from not allowing it to, allowing it to, allowing it with a significant amount of oversight. And so the city has to determine, council has to determine for the city where on that continuum you fall and we can address regulations that we, that we can address. But it, it all has to do with how much involvement does the city want to have? What's the budgetary commitment that that, that creates? Versus the, you know, if there's less involvement, less regulation, what impact does that have on the success of the program? What impact does that have on the ultimate goal of assuring that the animals are not mistreated?
I mean, it's obvious what we, what we have right now is not, is not working. We've got, there's tons of cats running around here, you know? So I, personally, I think we can put something together. And then it's just like any other ordinance we get out there, is later on we find, oh, we got a flaw here and here's the flaw. We always can make a change to any ordinance. It's not, nothing's written so well, of course.
Could I just?
We need to be able to give you direction on a real much way to go. Because it's kinda the stress that we have to go through, you know? We want to take this and then figuring out how to blanket this across the entire community from a legal perspective.
I just wanted to ask her first, has anyone on the city council, you know, everyone up there, have you guys been to the shelter lately?
All the time.
And then like, can you season?
I have a question right now about the value of the.
No, no, I'm just saying that the shelter is already under immense amounts of stress.
You've got no argument.
Yeah.
I'm there every Thursday, I probably talk to Sarah.
Yeah, yeah. That adding a TNR branch underneath the shelter would not work for the shelter because they're already mad.
And I don't think that's, that's not, that's not.
I think you just need to keep it really simple, just like you have the dog leash law. I think you just need to keep it really simple, just like you have the dog leash law. You're telling your residents dogs must be on a leash. You're giving your residents the opportunity to do TNR. It needs to be kept simple.
The leash law too. I have dogs that aren't on the leash. Who's going to go out and, I guess, animal shelters are going to go and get.
Right. But that's what I'm saying is you're making it way too complicated right off the bat.
When we make the city involved, it hasn't, it hasn't to be that complicated. I mean, we're making policy decisions for an entire community and we have to be cognizant of that and cautious and often talk to lawyers and be respectful of administrative staff because somebody has to organize this. So once we pass it, it's not, you know, just, it doesn't stop there. That's where it starts.
I don't think you'll have a problem with having enough help to open your.
I agree, but how do we draft that to where it doesn't tie your hands, but it doesn't allow so much flexibility that somebody could cause harm to either animals or property? We're trying to find that, that balance.
So at this point, I think we're just talking about a process here. And it truly is as complicated as it sounds. Because there are, and there are those who oppose it as well. And we need to make an ordinance that's clear to both ends.
Do you have in your ordinance Lafayette, Missouri, the Wompa Town right over here? Do you have their TNR ordinance?
I think I have that one.
Did you give them that one?
But if that's something you can email us, that gives us an opportunity to take a look.
It's short and it protects you guys. And I think you'll really like it.
Harold, any administrative concerns? You know, do you think we need to be as hands-off as possible? Or do you, you know, for respect for the time of the city employees? Or do you think we have some oversight so that things can't get out of hand or permanent process or something?
I've provided the council research. I still share the same concerns. This is a classic of it won't cost the city anything and then later on down the road it does. Providing the council a newspaper article from Columbia who has a TNR program. And we're already being requested for the city to help fund it. Ultimately, this is a community decision. My, my concerns have not changed. To be honest, the enforcement of this is any different than any other ordinance we have. But once you put it on the books, the city's on the hook to make sure we do it. If it's put in ordinance on the book that you're not going to enforce, it's worthless.
The pro side is well represented here tonight. And as the mayor said, certainly appreciate you coming out. But I have heard from the other side as well. Some of these ordinance needs to address their concerns as well as the concerns that you folks have. What here is not.
Can I ask what their concerns are specifically?
Pardon me?
Can I ask what their concerns are specifically?
The return portion is one. What guarantee do we have that stay neutered and return is going to, is going to protect those numbers? I mean, I know you cited some, some numbers that a study that, that said there's a couple of things that drive numbers. One is the availability of food. And the other, according to, to the Vietnam University was the study.
Michigan State.
Michigan State, was it? Okay. But there are other things that drive those numbers as well. So, you know, there's, there's a lot that this body needs to consider before we write that ordinance. As simple as it sounds, it's not.
I think what a lot of it will have to come down to too is community education. Those people who are against it, I, I feel like we could change their minds about it if they just knew what exactly is involved and how exactly it will benefit them.
We are all moving to the same goal of less cats in the public. That's, that's our goal and that should be their goal as well. That's just, what we're trying to get at is that we don't like seeing community cats. As cute and awesome as they are, you know, we want that number down. We want as few as possible.
I know Robyn, you said you want to invest more time to look at this. I, I think Doug might need some time to look at this as well for some recommendations.
I'm happy to review those. These are all policy decisions that the council has to make. And maybe your staff can provide back a document that adopts those policy directives.
If we don't like it, we'll send it back.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are as many different ways to approach this issue as there are communities that have discussed this issue. Also, Warrensburg needs to decide where it wants to land. And we can provide you with the document that will accomplish that.
I would direction. By now, there's everything under the sun out there. So we've got to say what we probably want.
I mean, as you say, I review, I have with the Sedalia's because I think I've run a line about Sedalia's. And it is, I mean, it's very basic, you know.
Columbia's is not.
Right.
Columbia's is very specific.
I mean, so for me personally, I think, I know our next meeting, we got this, we've got the sprinkler issue on there. So that's going to, that's going to have a lot of people there for that. So I mean, I'd like to, it's our first meeting in October. Let's come back with what we would like to see the ordinance to look like. Let's move forward on it. Because I think it was June or July when you brought this to us the first time.
In June.
Yeah. So I mean, I mean, you see there's some support for it.
And I, and I think there's support, but I mean, I think we seem to give some vague directions to the professionals so that they can, they can have something prepared for us. I think if we leave and do research, we come back with 10 different ordinances. And that doesn't, doesn't get us any further because there's so many things in each one of those. I think if we can just get some basic direction, you know, we want it. We want it to be hands-off, pretty wide open so that it doesn't involve, you know, a permanent process and things? Or is there, I'm surprised the council have concerns with that?
There was something in here I heard with the tip, one of the ordinance had something about, oh yeah, the ear tipping means the removal of the fourth of the tip. That was in Sedalia's.
It's standard.
They all have that.
That's standard TNR practice.
So you have to have that in the ordinance, even though it's TNR practice?
We're going to have to have a definition of everything drafted into the ordinance. You know, what is a community caregiver? What, what is that? What is ear tipping? What is that? How does that qualify? Which ear and how much?
I like the draft. I like that alley cat model. It's organized. I like the definitions. It makes sense. I think any citizen would be able to read that and understand. And I don't say anybody's, I just, I understood it the first time. The permitted act seems to be pretty broad. And it doesn't seem to obligate, you know, city staff necessarily.
I don't.
I don't know. But I think they, anyone. I mean, I think people are.
Similar to the alley cat model, no permit necessary?
I don't, I personally don't think we need to start out with the purpose. Because then we are putting it in the ban on the staff.
Well, that might be the harder part to enforce, right? You know, are you drafting what we're without permit?
That's the hard part. So we think wide open?
I don't know. Let, let anybody track?
Yeah, I think you have, no training, no license. Do you, do we want to require them to have permission from the property owner? You know, this is the subject. We need to kind of decide what do I have?
I think there needs to be something in there saying they need to have permission from the property or.
I think that's actually set back.
Does the council wish to repeal in its entirety the impounded ordinance that animals fed off the property of an owner will no longer be impounded?
No.
I mean, my whole neighborhood, I love my cat. Do not go and get my cat. But my whole neighborhood loves my cat. So if somebody comes in and impounds my cat, I'm going to be upset. Sorry. I know there's a law and I'm on the council, but my cat likes to roam. I can't keep it in the backyard. It's a cat. And it's neutered.
You're breaking the law under the city's ordinance. A trap and kill ordinance that was passed in 2011. And I really hope everybody goes back and says that because.
But I think that, I, I think that where TNR is going to concentrate the focus on is where, I mean, like, I went back in Valley View and take, take one of my daughter friend's. And I mean, it was literally just driving down the street with some cats just shooting back and forth across the street. I mean, that's where I see TNR concentrating on is in Valley View, is in, in the Rod View areas where literally, you know.
So you want to put in the ordinance a certain area?
No, I'm not saying put a certain area, but I'm saying that I don't see them going, I don't see them going into your neighborhood because, you know, I mean, I sold a house in your neighborhood and I didn't see a single cat walking around.
Well, and then it takes a walk because every single woman, you come to my house, it likes to walk.
So, you know, I don't, I don't see them coming to my neighborhood because I don't have a cat problem in my neighborhood. I don't, you know, I've never seen a cat walking around my neighborhood, you know. But on the other hand, there are neighborhoods, there are areas that, that this issue isn't if you, where they are spraying all over the place, they are doing all this stuff. So I, I don't seem to worry about the one cat that's way over here probably not necessarily going to ever get trapped. But yes, there could be people in Rod View who own a cat that, you know, those get out. And that cat would, you know.
You know that whatever we do, something is going to happen to where somebody's show cat gets neutered and.
If you have an expensive show cat, you are not liable to have to assure you that right now.
No matter what we do, something is going to happen.
But you still have your own ordinance.
That's what we're trying to figure out right here.
But you're just saying how we need to have ordinances and we need to follow them. But you have this ordinance in place that she keeps mentioning that you need to keep your cat on your own property or it's at risk of being impacted.
And it comes down to how do you enforce and we.
If someone's trapping all. So while I do respect and appreciate the input, it is a little bit hard for us to move forward. We need, I think, to be able to have that conversation among the five of us just so that we can move forward tonight before we redo this agenda.
I mean, I do like this. I do like the alley cat, alley's models. I like that. I don't, I don't think we need to repeal that entire ordinance we have. You know, I think maybe we address it a little bit more. And it's like the vicious dog ordinance, we had to address that to change it a little bit, you know. I mean, so I would say draft it as vague as possible and bring us the concerns of the ordinances that it contradicts. And give us a tough decision on what to do, you know, kind of get your direction. So as vague as possible. And then you come back and direct us that this is going to be a problem. And this is going to be a problem. Might be the best way to go about it. Use your best judgment. Keeping, keeping it vague. I know you're, you're going to hate it for this recommendation, but we would like to, I would like to keep it as open as possible, but I know that it's going to get honed in as we look at other ordinances and. It's like every ordinance that we have. I mean, we just did something, we did something with the driveway ordinance. We did something, you know, we find out that, oh, there's, you know what? We did, rewrote this, but yet we just found out there's a problem here with it. So it's, you know, it's just a matter of making some changes to it as we grow and learn. I mean, you know, he makes a good point. We just sat in here and listened to how many different things we put up on the screen.
Sir, I think we're going to keep, I do appreciate you all, but we, we do need to keep the discussion here right now.
Is it, is it possible to, I mean, I know our next meeting, we've got the sprinkler system. So is it possible to have some, have an ordinance, some other ordinance drawn up for us to review on the, the first of October's meeting? I mean, is that, is that too fast or can it be done?
I mean, if you just tell us and bring it back as quickly as we can, we'll get it back as soon as we can. And other things that are impossible.
Is that enough, enough direction? Or I know it's not enough. Can you work with it? You have some recommendations?
Yeah, we can bring something forward and identify areas for decision. But still the pain within that structure and council can make some decisions.
Okay, next we have. A resolution establishing a fee schedule for the fire department. A resolution of the city council of Warrensburg, Missouri, establishing a schedule of fees for the fire service and establishing committees for the implementation of.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor of the council, I'm cleaning up a resolution. And it charges for animal service fees and recovery fees and charging fees and collections. This is eliminating all those and updating the fees for recovery for mainly spiller pays for cocktails, alcohol, tickets, bills, you know, lard and out. And we have to spend money. It allows the state ordinance, or the state statutes allow the departments to recover that money. And this is just updating everything with the most recent Missouri statutes and eliminating all the stuff that we don't do anymore.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lunn?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next we have a resolution establishing adoption fees for Old Drum and Friends Animal Shelter. A resolution.
Mayor members of the city council, last month, or August 27th, we brought to you information regarding the shelter adoption fees. They had not been updated since sometime, so we are bringing back to you those numbers we presented to you. They're attached to the document and it will all be effective October 1st. We would still have our posit forward program. We would still retain the ability to have adoption specials for, for different things as well. We are recommending approval of the attached fee structure. Happy to answer any questions.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lunn?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next we have retail coach contract renewal. Approved contract with retail coach for economic development, data analysis, and retail recruitment services.
Last council, we have a full presentation from Representative Ritzel Gush. As we discussed, the pack is recommending go ahead and extending this contract as opposed to dealing with a fee. Because we switched companies, they're going to have to charge the fee to redo all the data analysis and everything else, which would be a significant increase in cost. And we have not been dissatisfied with the current provider, so we recommend to stay with them. And the, the fee actually represents a decrease in the annual fee from previous years. But still maintain their current data and partnership in our, in our development, retail recruitment process. So staff would recommend approval of the contract.
I didn't see the, in the term, how long is the agreement for?
It's a one-year contract.
One year, okay.
It's in the first paragraph. No, under terms, it just states in the first paragraph.
Okay, what is my terms? Okay, I was getting the wrong question.
Make their proof. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lunn?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Can we have a discussion of lodging tax?
Since at the request of the council last time, we could get an update, timelines for putting anything on the ballot. With the same as anyone that's interested to get a write-in from the council. It'll be a worry. We'll be there by the time you have to discuss and what you want to put anything on the ballot. Would be some additional costs depending on printing of space for ballots and all that, et cetera. But most of your costs and relations even if you're in the county, you're going to have to have a council election anyway.
So.
Tuesday before. So you have to certify.
So we're going to cost share some of the WCDV's?
That's up for, that's up for conversation, discussion. This is just on the agenda because council wanted some information back and we have some discussion on it. And so it's on the agenda so we can legally and freely open the door to that conversation.
I would say I would like this to have the skin and making one, but we already have the council. So I see, I didn't really read all, sorry about that.
This discussion is talking about the lodging tax or comparing our lodging tax to other communities. Our lodging tax is extremely.
Oh, no, I'm all for that. I just thought the cost of it, but I didn't know it said 4,800.
Good cost, additional $2,100 to put on there, but I think that's something for.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You're going to, you're going to recite that.
So is WCD, I'm sorry. Is WCDV looking for any recommendation on what we would like to see it at?
The board has not met since the joint meeting that we had on April 23rd. The, the WCDV board will meet, the regular meeting this Thursday. It is an item that we will be discussing, where we want to go from here, how we want to proceed. But yeah, that's going to be the first time that we've actually, as a board, been able to. Um, but yeah, that's gonna be the first time that we've actually, as a board, been able to discuss it.
And they ranged from two point five, we were the lowest.
We are the lowest, but what's been reported to me from the Missouri tribal council is we are the lowest in the state at two point five. It does go up, three percent was the next one, but then it goes on up to five on higher.
So you all will be discussing that and maybe.
Yes, exactly. And then we, as we discussed, at our October, in October, we'll have a board retreat. At that board retreat, we'll be redeveloping, recreating our strategic plan. And we know that that will be the message that we will be presenting to voters. And from that, we will be able to analyze where we wanna go from here.
Lodging tax, uh, statutes in Missouri are exceptionally fragmented. There is not a, a, a single authorizing statute, there's literally a dozen of them that cover different communities. And so one of the things that's very important is that any discussion of rates happen under a specific statute that is covered by the city. So there, there are a variety of rates in communities, but that's, that may have nothing to do with what the authorized rates are for.
I'm not sure I understood all of that.
So we don't wanna talk about price comparing to what other communities are doing, we're just.
Correct, yeah, so for example, there's a park sales tent that's authorized, and it's authorized at three different rates. And so every city in the state of Missouri that wants to adopt that tax, those are the rates you got. But for, yeah, for lodging taxes, there are many, many different statutes and all of them set their own rates for the communities that they apply to. So we just have to make sure that we're, we're looking at other communities, we're looking at communities that are also covering that statute.
So that's something for the board to, to help with and just some.
Yeah, that's good. No, I'm all for, I think we do need increasing, uh, three years ago, I sent up on the.
Yep, we've been saying that for years.
I guess I'd like to see what the board, like, I think it needs to be increased, but I'd like to see how much they're interested in increasing.
Right, and what we can, yeah, we need to look at those, like Doug just mentioned, we need to look at those and see what we can and then go from there.
But, I mean, it's, the other, the other portion of it is the WZ, the WEP, whatever. Um, are they prepared to, to educate, to go out and do the education portion of it? Because obviously if we put something on the ballot that says it's a tax increase, the citizens are gonna go, oh, I can agree, you know.
You're exactly right, it's like we talked about the joint meeting, it's just an education process and it's also gonna give us an opportunity to bring a general awareness for the WCVB.
Right, right.
So, we educate them, what, that, that's part of our struc, our, our board retreat, what are we gonna do with it? Because you bring any tax issue in front of the voters, they're gonna wanna see, what are you doing with it, what have you done with it in the past? And so we'll have to educate them what our mission and our goals are. Um, and then ultimately we have to educate them, they're not paying it.
Correct, that's the biggest piece of the education right there. Yeah, oh yeah, definitely.
Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Jerry Revile.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the information. Got to learn a lot about.
Yes, our two cats came from West Park, and they were three-month-old kittens, so we didn't know how we were, they looked like they were touching us. We didn't know how we were gonna do anything with them because, but, um, we brought a carrier in and as soon as we opened the door, the carrier, the kids ran in. So it's probably, that was the last thing they had seen before they got dumped out on park. Anyway, I'm, I'm here to not represent the tree board and we're asking for an amendment of our budget we've just submitted. We found out recently about a program through Davies Resource Company, it's a company that did the tree inventory in the city about seven years ago. They have a product now that will take the GIS Arc data that's currently in the system. And it's in a format then that is readily changeable. The current system is just not very easy to manipulate. And none of us on the tree board have the expertise in ArcGIS to be able to work with this. So we asked for a twenty-five-hundred-dollar increase in our submitted budget to go for the purchase of the TreeServe Eight program. So this would be a one-year subscription. We'd like to try it for one year and then import the data back into the ArcView for the city. And then reevaluate after that year how useful it's been. And maybe something that we'd want to do just every few years, not so much every year. But our trees are dynamic later in the ArcGIS system, much more so than stormwater drains, for example. Storms come, trees come down, we've gotten ten thousand from the conservation department to take down vicious trees, there's, there's a better word than that, the dangerous trees. And, um, so the list keeps changing, new trees get planted and we just don't have updated information to, to work with. And then there's also some problems with the original tree survey. And so we need to go back and do some changes and then update the status of certain trees. Certain of the trees that weren't a problem seven years ago are now a problem. And we just don't have an easy way of communicating back.
That's something we should put on the agenda for discussion, because we can't do that now, right?
If you, uh, give me your recommendation, I can add it to the budget and then, um, we present budget at the next council meeting for.
Yeah, okay, and we can have a discussion right now?
Once, once he puts it in the budget, then we can.
Council can't take any deliberative action at this portion.
Can I get a recommendation?
I'm saying, you wanna take it up at that next meeting now.
So we can talk about it at the next meeting and approve or disapprove at the next meeting?
Budget will be on the agenda next meeting.
Is it an annual expense or is it?
One year, but if you're gonna continue to run it without annual expense, there.
Right, that's what I mean, I'm just wondering if it's, so if you, you do it one year and you don't do it for another three years, you still have access to that or are you moving that out of the?
It could transfer it back into ArcGIS is what he said. So they put it into a program to manipulate it and we transfer it back into ArcGIS. And then depending on how successful that program is, they may choose to continue to renew it, as I understood his presentation.
I may have misunderstood you because I did, I didn't know some of the acronyms there, so.
Thank you. Okay, so the next meeting is budget approval, September, the last one of the fiscal year, right? So.
We've already done the first reading of the budget. So next one will be the second reading and then action protocol.
So if we were to change it at this point, we would have to do an amendment plus a first reading and a second reading?
Either that or go ahead and approve the budget and amend the budget later like we usually do throughout the years, you have, I don't think the expenses, there's multiple ways of doing it. But it'll be on the agenda next council meeting for your discussion and you get staff corrected and what you want us to consider that. There's lots of ways to move out the budget.
Okay, we have miscellaneous matters from the mayor and our city council. Um, we'll move on to the city manager report.
I wanted to express my gratitude to, uh, couple of Lund, Jacobs and Watts for attending and judging our employee barbecue, uh, last week. I think the employees, that's a good fun and, and, and lots of good food, so it was, it was fun. Um, even though Matthew, our finance director, won two or three categories, I'm not sure, he went up and smoked a meatloaf, but anyway. It must've been a good meatloaf. Uh, just some, uh, upcoming, uh, things regarding my calendar, I'm up here at the next council meeting, I'll be attending the International City Management Association Conference. And then, uh, we'll be going to Chicago soon and then I anticipate having a trip to Pentagon of the Wyoming Area Leadership Council in October as well, uh, regarding management base. Um, but the next agenda, uh, as has been mentioned before, uh, you will take off the table the discussion of the fire sprinkler code. It's not the fire sprinkler code, it's the fire, which includes the fire sprinkler change, but, and then also you'll be doing the final action regarding the budget. So if there are any questions, you can have a dialogue before I leave and we have to answer any questions or talk with you, uh, before I leave. So I do not have anything else this evening.
All right, Director, finance report?
Our outlook for what the budget will look like. With the. Dash and Buddy Hales and then the. Streetsweeper as well. Uh, this has already changed somewhat, uh, because the streetsweeper came in lower than what we expected. Uh, the budget was two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for the streetsweeper to came in, it's, it looks like it's gonna be around two-thirty or so. And also revenues are in a bit higher than what we expected, but this is a roundabout looking, which is looking at.
Tell the street sweeper we're doing payments?
Yes, we're doing payments on the street sweeper and then outright purchase of the, uh, PD equipment. So this will be included in the, in the budget, um, twenty-fourth.
Once this budget is passed and approved, you want the, uh, cams, uh, what, what company time would it be?
With the amount of money that we're spending, like to do an RFP, so we'll take, uh, the normal timeframe that it takes to advertise that and get bits back in. We have budget quotes right now for it, so, um, in a couple of months, probably.
We're, we're, we're probably the first part of next year, in service, serving next year.
The training and policy and all that stuff to be said.
Yeah, that's an incident recently, that would be helpful to have camera footage of.
Thank you.
Carl?
Uh, just wanted to check with the council members, the S I O R development day is next Thursday, the twentieth, the evening station in Kansas City begins at four P M. Any of you who are wanting to go, please let them know that.
When is it?
It's next Thursday, September twentieth.
I usually enjoy going. We're just gonna walk it.
Yeah, we're just gonna walk it. Okay, so you, Rob is for sure interested.
I'll be, I'll be at leadership academy in Kansas City, it's not a.
You won't.
I won't be out yet.
As a project update, our contractor is planning on building a mill and overlay of the Holden Street project, which, uh, the minder, that area that will be mailed out with part of railroad street. Concludes in South Street, so we'll be on both sides to track and take down that rest portion of cement that I believe where the body's been over. Let's see, go away. May move on very well, we have some, uh, utility contracts that, uh, they're working on today, get, uh, completely slate based, the concrete work. The better growth project, uh, likewise, it's got some, uh, waiting on to get the, uh, street lighting in place. Staff did some changes on the access points along that project, uh, they didn't, they just got terminated without a reason, so, uh, we can change them around, make them work better. The contractor will get a little off around that, I think, but the rain didn't help any. The other items, San Antonio, we have a crew that's, that is working to line about eighty, well, about eighty-four manholes in town. Lobbed the old brick manhole, uh, leak into the system and, uh, we got a really good, uh, price vendor this year, they've been knocking them out right now. So it's an interesting process, if you're seeing them not working, I ask you to stop and clear it out at the operation because it's, uh, kinda like working in a weather.
Randy?
None.
Nothing additional?
I have nothing additional.
I'm sorry.
Friday afternoon, we received the Bollocks Fire Training System that, uh, Mrs. Adams helped us raise so much money on to come in, we'll be having a formal presentation of it in the near future. We also attended two real, real good events this week, uh, several that we've been attending, uh, is the blood drive, which I'm sure the chief will have more information on and. And then the B A Homes Annual, uh, Family Day, we were out there and it was, even though the weather was cool, a little bit rainy, everybody had a class.
Get the redout, we're up.
Oh, yeah, I get the redout too, I was held up elsewhere, but I understand that it was massively well-attended again this year.
My staff is heading to Wisconsin to return with their ladder truck clear this week.
Yes, they love, they're leaving at three o'clock in the morning to go up there and inspect it for two days and then drive it home. And, uh, for the last time, I'll mention Airbags for a while, Bart will be happy. We'll, uh, we'll be posting them along with our old ambulance and several other vehicles from our departments for sale in the very near future. If you want any of our old stuff, come. Including his.
I have two, one owner's on there. Uh, I thought you had mentioned the blood drive since you paid for the piece this time, but you didn't, so I'll take it. Hundred twenty-four units of blood collected out of a hundred twenty-eight, uh, potential donors, um, this is our second one in a row, we've been over a hundred units, so, uh, we're really cranking out the blood drives. Next one will be in December, so look for that one coming up. Uh, this Friday, we'll buy all of you a cup of coffee to come by Cold Street Eatery, which means seven or nine, uh, for coffee to top, uh, so put that one in your calendars. And then lastly, this is more selfishly motivated than anything, um, the shelter has lots of kittens, we have fifty-four kittens, uh, five of them are at my house, so if you. You know anyone who needs a kitten, um, our kitten adoption fees are fifty for one, seventy-five for two, we do rate in pairs. Um, one of the things when Sarah and I were talking that hurts us are this, the free cat ads from Craigslist, Walmart or whatever. Um, when you consider our cats versus the free cat, you're looking at about two-hundred dollars plus in medical care. When you get the cat from us, you're only paying fifty dollars for it, they've all been spayed, neutered, vaccinated, they're healthy cats, ready to go to great homes, so. Get the word out, if anybody needs a cat, uh, they come to my house first and then go to Councilman Jacob's house, because I've gotta get a power mine. That's all I have.
I just want to say I've heard a lot of feedback on the, um, traffic, the new speed limit going north on thirteen. I appreciate the grace this department has given because a lot of people were unaware of that and so I stand by my idea of the blinking light because I think it will save people.
Speed, speed trailer's slowing down quite a bit too.
Yes.
It's what, it really helps.
It flashes red and blue at you, so that's usually.
That knows you're, that flash, know you're going more than ten miles or something.
I haven't seen that yet. All right.
You just, yes, it's.
I know that. Okay, so we conclude.
Both of those partners need to first with the section six, one oh dot zero two one of the revised.
Thanks for having us, thank you.
Relating to the one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the city and any confidential or privileged communication to the city and its representatives and its attorneys. Two, lease, purchase or sale or do a favor of public college trying adversely affecting the amount paid in the transaction. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employees by a public government authority. When personnel information is mentioned about the employees discussed or reported. Well, documents or any documents related to a negotiated contract or a contract is executed and all proposals are rejected. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings are representing to the employees, star F, star E, star R.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts, or sorry, Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thanks for being a part of this. And did you set up today? I came over and I was like, that's already done.
Well, yeah.
So September 11th ceremony at UCM. Bottom of the divide.